Good evening. This is Mary Kay Decourcy, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm calling our meeting to order at 6:05 PM on Wednesday, August 6, 2025. This meeting with the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees is being conducted with hybrid accommodations in order to allow members of the community to join remotely. The agenda that includes the link, telephone number, and access codes for this meeting was posted on the Auburn Town website on Friday, August 1, 2025. Permit me to confirm that members of this body or persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Matt Toth?
Present.
Nan Johnson?
Present.
Vera Karain?
Present.
Excellent, thank you. Erica Briesacher?
Present.
Lindsay Baker?
Present.
And Mary Decourcy? Present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Michael Zeller, Library Director?
Present.
Excellent, so we will call this meeting to order with the first item on the agenda, which is to review and vote to approve, possibly vote to approve minutes from May. So Erica's been kind enough to provide us with the minutes. Everybody could be go. Looks good to me. The only question I had is that how you spell Barbara Alveras's name? Where is it?
Did I spell it wrong?
Oh.
Did I mix?
How do you spell it?
Yeah, it's A-L-E-R-A-S.
E-E-R?
A-L-E.
Yep. E-R. A-S. Okay, that's okay.
I'll fix it.
Okay.
Every single time I fix something. It's all the names. It's what the name was for soccer.
So question, does anybody, has everybody had a chance to read? Does anybody have any other comments other than that spelling? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Can I have a second? 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 Excellent. And I'm just gonna do a quick roll call on that. You said yes, Nan Johnson?
Yes.
Vera Karain?
Yes.
Erica Briesacher?
Yes.
And Lindsay was a second motion?
Yes.
Yep, and Mary Decourcy is yes. Excellent. Thank you guys. The next thing on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? We do not have public comment this evening, so we will move to item three, update on the strategic plan. Mike and Lindsay, take over.
Yeah, we should discuss this ahead of time.
We didn't practice our sound and dance.
Yeah.
Do you want to give an update on the, just the survey stats? Did that close? You can kind of go from there.
Yep, so I actually had kind of sent out a few little samplings of the survey data before the meeting. The survey closed, I think we let it go a little bit into July, right? And we ended up getting 381 respondents, so not quite as many as last time, although Barbara did like to point out, we kind of had the patron satisfaction survey running for a while beforehand, so maybe some people did that one instead of. So yeah, lots of good data. Barbara's gonna be parsing that. Certainly happy to share it with any of you, just let her know. I can email over everything. But yeah, it's a lot of stuff that we kind of expected, just similar to the patron satisfaction survey, similar to what we've heard anecdotally, but like I was saying before the meeting, it was a little surprising to see how many, you know, young to middle-aged people come to the library without children. It was, you know, something like half of our visitors. So it's a really interesting bit of data.
Yeah, and I thought some, like, people gave some really thoughtful feedback. I don't think there was anything really shocking. And the next steps is Barbara will compile it into a report that we can include, you know, as an appendix, but then, you know, also give us the key highlights and takeaways. Yeah.
She did say if there was anything, that's where I grabbed these three data points from. She asked if there was anything she'd like to have, or we'd like to have her pull out. She can do it that way, we just have to let her know.
Any questions like that? Yes. Is there any specific points that we want to ask Barbara to pull out from the data that we're interested in?
You can feel free to think about it.
Right, think about it.
Email me later. If you want the full report, just let me know.
Okay. Any questions?
Maybe next we can talk about, let me think, the community vision statement or the social?
Probably the community.
Vision statement?
Yeah, did you all good?
Yeah, so, and that's just, I'm sorry, my heater. So the other thing that came out of the many meetings that we had with the advice, especially the advisory committee and the soar exercises, were these three community vision statements. So with the advisory committee, we developed eight, and then there was like a secret, you know, vote. Anonymized vote. And it ended up in a three-way tie, and I will leave them out, and we can, I think these were circulated via emails to the board.
Yeah.
But so the top three were in no particular order. Auburn, and these are community vision statements, so this is about the community writ large, not just the library. So Auburn is a welcoming, inclusive community that values diversity, kindness, and civic engagement, and offers a wide range of community connections for people of all ages and abilities. Number two, Auburn maintains safe and attractive public facilities and spaces that serve as community gathering places and centers for a wide range of affordable programs and activities that appeal to all ages and diverse interests. And then the last one is Auburn offers diverse high-quality education and lifelong learning opportunities that are accessible to all and prepare individuals of all ages to flourish independently in the world. They're all pretty nice, like, high-end, high-vision statements. And so the idea is that these are meant to be a piece of the final product. These are meant to be kind of overarching themes and drivers as we look at how we're gonna frame the strategy for the library into the next five years. You know, what do we as community members want to see in our community? And where then does the library fit into that vision of the community? So that's kind of the framing for these. And Barbara basically said, like, one, we can keep all three. I think all three serve different purposes, kind of say different things. The order she presented them in is nice because it's sort of a broad, like, thinking about diversity, kindness, civic engagement. Then it goes into sort of facilities and public spaces and having access to resources and activities and programs and things for all ages and interests. And then there's a specific call-out around education, lifelong learning opportunities, which obviously, the library will very clearly fit into all three of those visions. And I think they're all complementary, but not to influence anyone, you know, Paul, but... So I think we wanted to bring them to the board just to see, you know, if we like all three of them, you know, do we want to keep all three? Do we want to prioritize just one as the real overarching theme to sort of include? And getting into the next activity, which we will work on as a board, is really thinking about the mission and vision for the library. And so do we like the kind of expansiveness that this community vision affords us if we keep all three to inform then the sort of more concise, specific library vision, I think is the question I'm curious to hear from you guys.
Yeah.
I liked all three of those, and I thought it was interesting, they all got 66%.
You may say.
And I do think they say a lot of the same things. What I was gonna do today, and I didn't do it, was play with the three of them and just combine them. Take the best out of each one of them, because there's not much to argue about in that.
I know.
I like the first one. First one you asked. Anybody else?
I like all three, because, and I think the way you presented it is talking about big ideas, about the community itself, and then the facilities, and then the ideas of the education and learning, like, those scaffold.
I agree.
Yeah, and it's important to keep in mind, too, these aren't like defining anything. They're just kind of the guiding statements as we develop the rest of the plan. So it's not really hurting anything to have a little bit more.
But I love that they came up with three. I mean, that's just investment. That's investment. I appreciate it.
And it was, it was like ranked choice, so like, you put them in order that you liked the best. So it was, you know, of eight, for that percentage of us to vote consistently across those three, I thought was really telling.
I'm curious if it was the same process when Barbara did it with us. We physically drafted it, and right there on the spot, is that what you did? Okay, cool.
Yep.
That's exciting.
So, I mean, again, I think that this is gonna be an appendix to the final plan, and I think that all three afford, like, good guiding principles. We don't have to have a perfectly refined, this isn't getting published for the town of Auburn. This is, this is just to support our direction and how we think about framing a strategy going forward. So there's no harm in keeping all three. They don't have to be perfectly wordsmithed, although it is always my human instinct to kind of mush it into one, but we can keep them as three individual concepts, and to your point, I think good scaffolding for what we want to target when we think about strategies with the library.
So I think, I think the vision statement is even worthwhile when you hire people.
Yeah.
You get to really talk about what the community has said it likes or wants, needs.
And I think that these may prove to be an interesting input, because I know that the town will have to update the strategic plan at some point, right, the town writ large. And so I think it offers some valuable, and a valuable input to that process when they're ready to pick it up, so. Okay, so it's not a vote, but general consensus, we'll kind of keep these three. We'll present them as an appendix to the strategic plan output and kind of use them as our guiding principles.
Everybody's in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. That works for me.
Okay, great.
Do you want me to talk about focus groups?
Yeah.
Do you want to move on to, do you want to do mission and vision?
Oh, yeah, maybe let's do mission and vision, so I think it's complementary. So the next step that we need to do is really take a look at the current mission and vision for the library, right? And so thinking about now, we've got this community vision documented, we've had some pretty good input, and want to take a look at what the current mission and vision statements are and evaluate as a board as we think they need update. You know, they were created at least five years ago. I'm assuming they were fresh five years ago, but we thought that would be a good exercise as a board. I don't think it has to happen tonight. It's not gonna happen tonight, obviously, but I just kind of want to put it on record that we are gonna talk about this probably the next, we have the September meeting.
That sounds great.
Let's put it on the agenda, and I can circulate the language, existing language in advance. You know, we can reattach the community vision statements, that everyone can kind of see them side by side, and then maybe we can spend 15 minutes on kind of a brainstorm wordsmithing during our next meeting.
That sounds great. Put it on the agenda.
So as far as the focus groups go, Barbara held, there was a plan for three focus groups. We drew most of the participants from survey respondents who had said they would be interested, and Lindsay rounded up a few, few folks to fill in the gaps. We were only able to find enough to fill two focus groups, though. They both went very well. Barbara's working on, she uploaded her notes, but is working on kind of boiling that down to a more digestible format. So we do, we did pay for three focus groups, so we've got one more on the table. And what we had talked about was doing a specifically teen-focused focus group.
That would be great.
Especially now that Andrea and some other staff have more kind of teens coming into the bill. We're doing the teen crafting, we're doing Dungeons and Dragons. So we're gonna try to grab some of our regular teen patrons from some of those activities to participate in a teen-focused focus group. If for some reason we're just not able to get enough people to put that together, we do still have a list of other folks who have been interested in being in a focus group, but just couldn't make any of the dates that we had previously provided. So we'll reach out to those folks next, but I'm pretty optimistic we'll be able to get six to 10 teenagers together to participate, so.
Especially because so many of the survey respondents were really in the, like, full adult category. There were very few younger respondents, and so when we were talking about do we kind of go back to the same pool of focus, we volunteers, who, you know, just kind of fizzled out last time from the surveys, or do we pivot and try to find an opportunity to hear a younger voice in the mix? And so hopefully, yeah, it'll be exciting if we can get a younger crowd.
School starting back up, that would be a pretty easy way to kind of say, hey, come to the library.
So we'll, we'll work with Barbara to see how we can structure that and get some recruits to give us a slightly more youthful perspective.
Maybe you can bring your puppy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, maybe that's it. I'll say, we'll bring the puppy. Comment to the focus group at the library.
And we talked a little bit about, I know you talked about in terms of engaging teenagers, like, offering something like pizza or something like that to get them over here. Do you think that could be a possibility?
Well, for the focus group, because of everything Barbara's doing, it has to be remote.
Oh, that's right. My fault, I forgot.
But certainly for other activities, yeah.
What's your optimal number for participants?
Like, six to 10, probably.
Yeah, I think a smaller number would suffice if you only really wanted the teenagers.
Yeah, I think, I think if we could get six, it would be perfect. That's what the other groups ended up doing roughly, and that was a really nice, it accommodated a lot of, like, microphone time for everybody on the hall, which is good. Yeah, so fingers crossed.
Yeah. So those are our big strategic plan updates. Moving forward, we've got the focus group planned. Barbara's gonna start compiling all of the data. We've done most of our data collection at this point. And then we'll have a final strategic plan at the advisory committee meeting in October. And we'll, yeah, kind of start wrapping things up.
Cool. Awesome. Any other questions or comments before we move to the next item on the agenda? So the director's report, an update on staffing programming and hours of operation, number four.
So I gave everybody a lot of documents, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to just kind of, if you want to take a few minutes to just kind of skim through everything. I think I gave you a budget update. The list of the bill schedules, and then our, one of our little, one of our little trustee signs.
So where are you gonna start?
Well, I just wanted you to all, if you've had any questions, just kind of look through anything. I only really have a couple of numbers to update people about, but I figured there might be some questions about either budget or statistics or anything like that.
What was the big electrical service? Yeah, those 36.
Oh, on page one?
Yeah.
So, interesting discovery made, and actually, we're in the room for it. If you look up, you will notice on all of, well, there's holes in the ceiling as well from the rain, that's another thing we're dealing with, but you'll notice there's kind of little dark slits on the side of all of these light fixtures. So we had a light go out in the history room, and when they went to replace it, they found that all the lights in this room and in that are built into HVAC vents. So the light fixtures and the HVAC vents are the same setup. So in order to, basically, in order to change the light bulb, they had to redo the whole fixture. And since they were doing that, there's a second one in that room, so they just said they'd do the other one while they were in there. So that's why a light bulb replacement cost us almost $10,000.
Wow.
Which thankfully, we had some capital funds for electrical updates, so we were able to spend that. But yeah, these will have to get done eventually, so that'll be...
We'll do. Yeah. So how many, how many were, did it work?
That was, that was two for 36.
Just two, and there's some light in there.
Have to be the labor and all that, huh?
It's mostly labor, yeah. So the town is looking into getting, a big part of this is because Auburn does not have an in-house electrician, so they always have to contract out, and that's, that always adds a major cost, so.
The school doesn't help?
I believe so. So my understanding is that they are looking into bringing on, that's one of the town's, like, major next hiring pushes, is to bring in an in-house electrician. Because, yeah, I mean, we're looking at, what, probably like $30,000 to redo all of the...
Change.
Yeah. So, yeah, very long answer for a question.
Shouldn't have asked the question.
Well, there's some other big tickets on that August 5 building, so the, what was the temperature control, that's 1125, that's just normal, what we pay in summer.
Which, sorry.
AC, on the very first page, was the 1,125 for the temperature control. It's like the last item.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's just, that is just our yearly maintenance on the HVAC system, yeah.
And then the GOV, the GOV connection in the middle there, the 7400?
Okay, this is, yes, this is, was another capital request. It's purchasing, we're replacing all of our public computers out there, because they're, they're in really rough shape. It's, it's, best practices, you usually want to replace public computers every, like, three to five years, and I think these ones are pushing 10, so, yeah, it's definitely high time for that. So they're, what we're going to do, though, is I want to, before we deploy all of them, I'm also purchasing licenses for freezing software, which will, basically, like, will have a default setting for the computer, and so no matter what the patron does to the computer, it will always roll back to that setting, because a lot of the issues that we have now are just, they're not frozen, so people can do things, and it just stays that way. So this is a, you know, kind of standard best practices for public...
Safety.
Yeah, 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 I mean, that way, if they get, have something problematic, or a virus or something, it just purges it right out. So, yeah, we just have, I should mention, Molly is technically back, she's not back in the building, she's working remotely at present, but she is back.
Awesome.
And so I've been having her work on this, she's just researching prices.
Great.
And contracts for different companies, so.
So exciting.
Glad to hear that.
Welcome back, Molly.
She's working a couple days a week, you know, half, half-days, but she's gonna start using back into full-time, and she'll be back in the building hopefully within a few months.
Excellent. That's exciting. We miss her. How expansive is security dash lighting? I can see the new light poles coming in the parking lots, so I'm assuming that's gonna light up that area, but I don't, I'm for us, just on the town budget.
Oh, town budget. Oh, yeah, so this, this was a capital fund, and I don't know exactly, I did talk to the town accounting department about this, and I'm not 100% sure.
What did it do?
Yeah, exactly what that was originally appropriated for. So this, this is the money that we used to update some of these, the light fixtures next door, though. So, because, yeah, I think there might have been some of it that was originally intended for the parking lot, but now that they're redoing that whole section, it's all gonna be built into that anyway, so.
Which is good, I see a lot of lighting in a different area, that really might light up that area.
Yeah, yeah. Any other, not, I'm not brushing or anything, but anybody else have any other questions about? There's, since it's been a while since our last meeting, I know we have a lot of bill schedules and things.
On the year-to-date budget, what does lost fees for replacements mean?
So lost fees for replacements is when, it's a fund that we have, when, like, a patron damages or loses an item, the money that they give us goes into that account. And we've started using that to just do the replacements of things now, or if we need to kind of flesh out the collection. It's sort of a, like, it's a little bit more of a free account. We can kind of do more.
Right, because it's coming out of a direct, it's like a...
Yes, yeah, it's not.
It's not, it's not from the general budget. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
So, yeah, this, this has our regular budget, all the 016102 accounts are library stuff, and then the 266 is that account, and then all of the 066 ones are the capital funds that I want, that especially needs to get all spent this year, because some of those have been rolled over for a few years, and, yeah, definitely.
And so ceiling tiles is, like, where, is that just here?
Yeah, yeah, that was, before, a few days ago, I wasn't really sure what I was gonna spend that on, but, yeah, now, that's sort of answered itself. We had a, unfortunately, last Thursday, we had it very bad, which, this stuff happened from then. They did patch it up, they did find it and patch it today.
Okay.
So we should be okay, and then they're gonna just work on replacing the damaged tiles.
This ceiling has leaked for the past 20 years.
Flat, ooh, just the other one.
No matter how many times you replace the ceiling tiles.
Yeah, this, this was really bad, though. I never seen any of this, but, I mean, I came in on Friday morning, and it was still coming down, so, yeah, that was, that was, and I did have public buildings looking. There was some thought that there might have been a warranty on the roof, so they're looking into that. But a few, a few different people said that, so it seems to have...
Yeah.
That might be true.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it was just wishful thinking. It seemed like somebody at some point said something about that.
Well, here's hoping.
Yeah. Yeah, any other questions about the budget or about any of our statistics?
I mean, do you feel like anything is, like, exceeding, I mean, it's one month into the budget here, so like, are you worried about things being yet, or is it looking good?
I think we're, I think we're in good shape. We were lucky in a way that the capital accounts that we had kind of fit very snugly into some of the projects that we're working on. Yeah, so we're, we're using, the security and lighting will probably be used the rest of it to replace some of these fixtures, ceiling tiles, well, we know what that's gonna be now. And the computer updates, we're replacing all of the public computers. We're also buying new printers for both the public and the, as you can tell from some of these, our staff printer is really on its last legs and needs to be updated. So we will be getting all new equipment from that, from the capital fund. We'll probably have a little bit left, which I'm gonna use some of that to also buy the licenses for that, that security software that we'll be rolling out. I should mention, this is not filtering software, this is not anything like that, it's just, like, keeping the computers from getting viruses or damaged or anything like that. And, yeah, we'll have a little bit left over that we can maybe do a few other little things with, but those are really, like, the, the public computers and the printers are really on their last legs and changed.
And the public computers are just the ones in the main? Because the ones in the children's are newer, or no?
They might be.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, I'm just gonna do it.
Yeah, we're gonna do, yeah, come on, and get them on a schedule.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, we're doing, I, I believe there's ten out there, so we'll just do all ten of them.
Great, great.
Yeah, we had great stats for June, uh, ten thousand seven hundred forty visitors. Definitely a lot of that is, um, thanks to summer reading, which I'll have a little bit to talk about with summer reading. Um, ten thousand six hundred thirty-one physical items loaned. Uh, six hundred three computer sessions, hundred sixty-two museum passes lent. It's a very, very busy. I'm sure the staff would echo these statistics. It's been a, was a very, very busy month for us.
That's great. I love these. I got snapshots.
Yeah, we used to do them in Shrewsbury and they, they were just helpful to kinda, yeah, give a quick little snapshot of.
Is this for June or July? Just?
Sorry, I, I know I said June, and I had a typo in there that said June for a while too. This is July.
It's July, okay, just so that I have it.
Yeah.
Don't have to correct it.
And we, I, I think you mentioned this earlier, but do you put this up on, on the Facebook page and everything?
Um, we're going to, yeah.
Okay, great, awesome.
If we, if we hadn't already, that is the plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we've, I've got one in the lobby too.
Great.
People come in so they can see it.
Awesome.
So any last questions about any of that kind of stuff? We're clearly chugging along during, during the summer.
Yes.
Um, which, speaking of which, so summer reading, um, obviously it hasn't totally ended yet, but you know, for the most part, I would assume we've got about as many participants as we're gonna get. Um, the total number is as of, uh, as of yesterday was seven hundred three participants between adults, young adults and kids, so.
Great.
Yeah, that's, that's almost, I think almost twice what we had last year.
That's great.
Um, so we had a hundred fifty-five adults, uh, seventy-six teens, and I gotta add these up, my head. Four hundred seventy-two, yeah, four hundred seventy-two children.
Right. Right.
Hundred fifty-five adults, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, yeah, I think, um, I think a lot of it, well, I know, I know a lot of our friends who signed up, cause I saw them doing it. Uh, I think a lot of them were, were parents coming and they'd, they'd sign up their kids and they'd see the, the baskets that we had to, to raffle, which were sponsored by our friends group. Um, we'd see, they'd see the baskets out there and they'd go, you know, I'm gonna sign up for this too.
Great.
Um, so yeah, we get kids and parents a lot at the same time.
That's great.
Moving ahead with our, our meeting program, have you thought at all about having a townwide read? Is that something that comes up during the fall or any other time?
It's certainly, I mean, we did a couple of those in, in Shrewsbury, so it's certainly, I hadn't specifically thought of that, but if people think that might.
Yeah, I don't think there's a particular time you have to begin it, that's what I'm just saying.
No, we kinda, I mean, at least in Shrewsbury, we kinda do them whenever. Um, I mean, there's certain, you know, there'll be certain nationwide things that will kick off at different times, but.
That might've, might appeal to you or the staff would think it would go here, um, just to continue the, the reading.
Yeah, yeah, we would often, um, not to keep referencing Shrewsbury, but in Shrewsbury, we would, uh, sometimes do like a winter reading thing too.
Great.
Um, you know, a little bit lower impact, but, um, yeah.
Something to think about if we've had such a good response here, just keep it going.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, oops, get my notes. Um, any other questions about summer reading or stats or anything?
Oh, great.
A couple little updates, uh, so I did, uh, well, actually it was Dory, signed off on the, um, talking about the expansion. Uh, Dory signed off on the scope of the architect's work, so they are now in the process of drafting their, their plans of the new expansion. Um, they've been in a couple times to take some additional measurements and kinda look around and asked a few questions. Uh, but the plan is, as I understood it, they're gonna come up with three different drafts that, um, you know, we can kinda choose from, so we've got our little committee of, of Townspoke to look at those. Uh, we do have a, I think we did finally confirm, um, we're gonna meet with Martha Pappas just to go over all the, the funding. Um, Dory's been having me pull all that together, um, the funding that the town got, the funding that the friends got, uh, just so we've got something to talk with her about. I believe that's, uh, with, with me, next Friday, I think.
Great. Just before, I know there's the, this town-wide committee for this, but what is, and this is, I know, I feel like I'm always poking the bear when I ask a question, but what role does the board of trustees play in deciding things about this building? And I don't know the answer to that anymore, but I've just never known the answer, but traditionally, the board of trustees would be involved in, in the building. And so I'm just curious like if we have a, you know, have an opportunity at least to review the plans as well.
Yeah, yeah, well, Matt is on the, is on the committee, so, you know, you gotta, if, if you would like to review the plans, that's certainly an option.
I, I, I think it'd be good for the board.
Okay.
I agree.
Sure, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Maybe at the September meeting, we can hold those fees for it, or, well, if they're ready, or maybe like September, October, whenever they're, they're ready.
He had said, no, I'm not gonna mess it up, but I, I thought he had said something like, like three to six weeks or four to six weeks to do that.
So maybe October.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But maybe we just keep it as a standing agenda item anyway.
I agree with that.
For the next, you know, until we have a decision about where the direction, maybe that's the previous framing, and then it's not a specific commitment to deliver something, okay.
Yeah, so like where it says number six, I'll just keep updating, overview of the APL, we could just keep reviewing it. Okay, great, thank you.
And I'll certainly, I mean, I'll certainly let you know, listen, as I've got the, the drafts in hand. Yeah, this will, will be scheduled.
So there, so there are no plans as of yet? There's no kinda rough idea of what's, uh, what the expansion's gonna look like?
Well, we, we had drafted, we had drafted at, well, I say drafted, that sounds much more professional than what we did. But we, we had put together a few ideas, uh, the, the staff and I, um, that we ran by the, um, the committee. And that's what NALT Architect are, are basing their, uh, their drafts off of.
Okay, and just so I understand correctly, has the, has the funding for the expansion increased from what it was prior? Is that, did I understand that portion correctly?
We, we, we don't have any hard numbers yet, but I, I would be shocked if it had. I mean, this would, what we're proposing is a much larger expansion than what the sunroom was, so. Um, yeah, it likely will have a, a higher price tag. Um, we did design, we did come up with a way, and, and what we talked to NALT about was kind of tiering things, so if, um, you know, if we have to scale back or if we have to do things like a piece at a time, there are sort of like three steps that we can, we can do within.
Sounds practical.
Yeah, and, and all of, all of the, um, kind of ideas that, that we came up with, that we passed along to NALT, were all stuff based off of what we've seen in the surveys, what we've heard anecdotally, what we've heard at meetings. So it should all be, you know, more programming space, more, um, you know, meeting space, you know, more sitting areas with outlets and access to tables and that kinda thing.
And it's for sure on that side.
Yes, yeah, so it would be out the South River side, yes. Yeah, I have a little bit of concerns moving any closer to the water, to be honest, just given, given what I've seen of the water table, it makes me a little jittery.
I've never heard of the library ever did flood. Did it, Dan? Did you ever hear, did the water ever get in the library?
Oh, no, no, but they, they never, it went that way. It was always a danger point and so back was never considered.
No, but I'm just thinking with the little, uh, stream here and the pond, did we ever?
No, no flooding.
Yeah, yeah, and library floods, I, I've certainly heard horror stories about other libraries flooding, and it's, it's, it is like the worst thing.
I did go out back though to see how the bridge was connecting, and, and with some conservation chopping and that tree, it's, it's gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's certainly what we're planning to do, we'll try to integrate with that, you know, do some outdoor space and, um, tie everything together.
Over there, but I haven't been able to see anything.
I'll show you, yeah, I'll show you what, I didn't take it from the library.
Outdoors space for the, the animal encounters.
Oh.
Visits.
I don't know if they want the kangaroos and things running around that side. That seems a little, a little dicey, having them in the, in the enclosed program rooms would be a little bit safer.
Go first one.
Yeah. Yikes. So, uh, yeah, just a couple other little things, uh, as, as of
Yeah.
As of, as of about twenty minutes ago, when I talked with Mary, we've signed off on the heiress report for this year, so we should be submitting our, I'll do that tomorrow morning, so. Um, now we just have to do the, the state aid report and then, then we're good for another year.
You can concentrate on something else.
Yes.
Do you wanna take a look at that too, Erica?
I can take it.
That looks great. The bridge looks great is what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the state has definitely done a much better job of streamlining the heiress report in past years. It's not as, uh, it used to be such a nightmare in years past, but it's definitely a lot more mannered enough. You keep your stats correctly, it's a lot easier to put together now.
Absolutely.
And the team did it, actually, it's, the team did a lot of it, cause I was on vacation and, uh, I had them put together some of the stats for me. Any questions about any of that stuff, any goings on in the library that I am?
Update on staffing?
Um, yeah, no, no major updates, we're still on target. Uh, we'll probably post the reference position. I'd like to do it in October, but I should probably realistically do it in, in November. The plan is to have them on board probably in, in January. And then that kinda completes the, the first arc of what I hope to hire, so, um, Dave, Andrea, Molly and I will start planning kinda where we wanna go from there. We still, we still definitely need at least a few more people, but, um, we're definitely with, with a reference librarian on top of who we've already hired, I think we're gonna be in.
Compared to twelve or thirteen.
Yeah, my, my goal, I think, are thirteen to fifteen, depending on the positions, is kind of the ideal spot.
And would that impact, do you think when you have those hires, that would impact these hours of operation?
Yes, yes. Um, so we've been having some conversations, um, you know, uh, well, in general, I think once we've got everybody back on board, once we've hired the new people, um, I think the plan is still open for full days on Saturday. I, I, once we've got enough, once we've got enough supervisors to do that, um, and I think for the staff, it will be easier as well, because you're not having to piggyback like a couple of hours every week, you can just, you can work your Saturday and then take Monday or Friday or whatever off. It's just an issue of, you know, we need enough supervisors so that it's not falling on the same, you know, two people all the time.
Right, right. That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, that, that really gets stuff on people.
It, yeah, a, a lot of libraries do every other weekend, but I, I think it's, I think it's a lot. Yeah, I think it's a lot for staff, so, um, it's much easier when it's spread out among four, five, six people, so you're not doing it all the time.
See again, there is not a reference librarian yet. You're still working, it's just.
Correct, yes.
So it's gonna be reference program?
Yes, yeah, and I, actually, I've been saying reference just because I think that's what people recognize. I'm probably gonna write it out as programming and reference, because I think, um, you know, realistically, you're just not getting the same kind of elaborate reference questions all the time. I think programming will just by inertia end up making up a larger part of that, of that position.
Maybe more adult programming?
Yes, yes, this is.
Because Asia seems totally.
Yep.
Looked in the, the children's and younger.
Yeah, this is specifically for adult programming. So hoping to get somebody who can do for adult programming what she's done for children's programming.
That would be awesome.
Um, which is another reason why we need extra programming space, cause I, I love this room, but it's just, it's not gonna be enough for what we're hoping to pull off. And yeah, as, as far as other hours, um, I gotta talk it over with the staff, cause I don't want to
Yeah, right.
impose anything on, on people when they were hired with certain understandings.
Yes.
Um, but I think we'll probably expand the hours a little bit. Um, we probably need to wait till Molly's back and kinda back into the swing of things, but, um, but yeah, I think we'd like to get some later meetings.
Even if it were an hour from seven to eight, then it means how, how much that impacts the staff, but yeah, one hour per week and Saturday, that would help the population.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's kind of the plan. I know a lot of libraries, um, in Shrewsbury, we were open till nine and we really weren't to getting many, too many people from eight to nine.
I don't think that's the big one, it's, it's up to eight.
Yeah, yeah.
But it will give more flexibility on meetings, when we have to start at five-thirty or six, they could, they could bug up and go, they had to add hours, which frees up people from their work.
Actually, yeah, yeah.
Have time for dinner.
Yeah, that's.
And to get to the meeting.
Yeah, that, that.
What I did tonight was just cook dinner and then I eat it and come running here.
Yeah, and that, that is, that is a part of it, you can have your meetings kinda after dinnertime.
Right, yeah.
Um, it makes it a little bit easier for working professionals to get there. And having more options on, on Saturday, you know, if we've got more supervisors on Saturday, we've got longer hours on Saturday, then we can actually do some programs and things.
We've got a number of Saturdays with closed anyways, that's, that's helpful too.
Yeah.
You know, I think we'll, we do six or eight, something like that, so that helps too.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, just making sure that it's kinda spreading it around and not putting too much burden on the, the staff. But yeah, we've got some ideas for other folks we would be hiring for different positions. But I, I think we're in, I think we're in good shape. I think once Molly is, is fully back in the building, and once we've got the programming reference staff, we're gonna have a really robust, we're gonna get a lot done.
Awesome, awesome. Anything else on that before we go to the policy update and review discussion?
Uh, no.
Anybody? Okay, you wanna take it away?
All right, yeah, more of me. Well, I mean, really, uh, just go back. Uh, I sent everyone the policies ahead of time. I didn't know if anybody had any questions. Um, I know we were chatting a little bit before the meeting. It was mostly just to kind of move out some of the language, clarify some of the language. One of the things that I tried to emphasize in all the policy was just clarifying the point that, that staff are empowered to kind of interpret the policy from situation to situation.
Yeah.
Um, just so it's, it's clear that, you know, policies are not meant to be rigidly, you know, inflexible, like it's, we understand we're in a public setting, we get all kinds of people, things, things happen and staff have to make decisions and, you know, I don't want them to feel like a hammer's gonna come down for them because they didn't interpret the policy correctly or something.
Or you have to interpret every single event that happens.
Yes, yeah, it's a, it's a very fluid environment, and I want the staff to feel like they've got the flexibility with the policies to kinda deal with the situations as they arise. Um, so yeah, there's kind of, there's, there's three tweaked policies, and then there's one brand new policy. Uh, so I don't know if anybody had any questions about that. It's large, the library of things is a.
Oh, yeah. It's funny, on the other three that you had, I liked everything that you did with those, and they just clarified things, made it a little smoother or comfortable. Um, but the library of things, uh, there was something in that.
Need to look at it.
Yeah.
I, I didn't make all copies of everyone, just because I, I get a little, once, once the paper volume hits a certain level, I feel like it starts to get too hard to keep track of everything. But the, yeah, library of things policy was largely based off of the one that we did in Shrewsbury, um, with just a few tweaks to make it a better fit for, for Auburn.
I didn't look at this, but I assume that that's something.
Yeah.
Probably, um, that might even have to go through legal maybe on that one, I don't know.
Liability reverts, what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can ask, I can ask Dory about it. A lot of times, um, it's really just.
Covering, covering.
Yeah, it's, it's just to make sure, like, you know, depending on how things play out, people, lawyers can say all sorts of different things, but it's just to kind of have it on record that you understood that you were, you know, using something that could potentially be dangerous and used incorrectly.
Right.
Um, not that I think anything we have in our library of things is particularly risky.
Not yet.
And if, so this is like every time someone takes something, they have to fill this out?
Yes, yeah.
Got it.
What's the, um, would they not be able to, if they don't return that and they're not paying their fines, what happens with their library card?
Yeah, so.
I think that was a question.
Yeah, so now, and, and this works, this actually is the same with everything, not just library of things. Um, cause we are, since it's new, since they are more expensive things, we are charging fines for library of things, overdue items. But, uh, really with, with everything that's, even though we're fine-free, you do still accumulate the fines until you return the item. And then the fines come off your card once the item has been returned. And then the fines come off your card once the item has been returned. So, um, if you just hold on to something definitely, it eventually goes into lost status and that will block your card. So you can't just take things and disappear with, I mean, I guess you could disappear and never come back to the library. But if you just take something and then try to use the library again, your card will be blocked until you return that item.
It'll be the same giant pool of fees for lost and broken.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, yeah, cause I mean, yeah, some of the Library of Things items are, you know, they're technology. There's like a sewing machine in there, which I think is.
Hundreds of dollars.
Four hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, something like that, so.
Really, eighty-five dollars. I have my machine repaired.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the cost comes in.
Yeah, yeah, we used to, we had somebody at TruSberry that knew how to fix them herself and so she would do it, but I, I can't, I can't imagine what that's gonna, if people just smash things up. You know, nobody here can do that as far as I know. So.
We'll see, we'll see.
I, I, I think, you know, if you need, uh, our approval on those policies.
Yes.
I'd be willing to move, uh, all three of them.
Which reading that? I've got a question on the community.
Yeah, do we, do we vote? You, you should probably do one of it.
That's what I was thinking.
So, I don't know if you wanna pass those over to.
The appropriate, uh, library use policy.
Actually, before we vote, just a little bit of background. So rewriting policies is just kind of a best practice. It's, it's something they, um, tell you in libraries you wanna do every few years. So this is kind of just the first step. These, really, it's just these are the ones that I had the easiest access to, editable versions of them. Um, and the appropriate use is one of the most important ones, so. Oh, yeah, so these are the un, these are the unedited ones.
I know.
So my, my goal is I wanna basically go through all of the library's policies and kind of make some adjustments and tweaks and everything. Um, I know you folks did an amazing job with the collection development policy. That is one that we wanna update really like every, really every year or two. Because that's the one that we, um, we have to have on file with the state to get access to certain things too. You don't have to update it with the state, but they do start to get a little annoyed if you've got like, I know you folks did it a few years ago, but, um, they do start to get annoyed if it's been too long since things have been updated. So, uh, assuming that other things wind down a little bit and I've got the bandwidth to focus on things, I'm hoping to bring like a couple policies per, uh, per meeting until we've gone through all of them. Um, and potentially write a few new ones just as befitting the situation. And I, I'd also like to, I don't know if the trustees feel obligated to vote on this, but I wanna get a uniform visual format for the policies because they're all a little different.
I think that's a good one.
And that just kind of creates some confusion in interpreting things. So, yeah.
So, so do you wanna get them into kind of a uniform format and all of that? And then have us vote at the next meeting, or do you want us to vote at this meeting?
Um, I think you can vote at, at this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, just on, in the, in the interest of the content. I don't know if down the line we could just vote on, on like a uniform format with the understanding that I'll fit all the policies into that, or we could revote on everything, I guess, at that point. But just in the interest of.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I guess in this one we can vote on content and then in another one we can vote on formatting.
Agreed.
You like this logo?
We, we had a conversation about that.
Oh my God, I'd be so happy to dump that logo.
We had a conver, we had a conversation about it and then like two days later, Dave brought it up to me too, so. So, yeah, I, we have some consultants that I had worked with at TruSberry to redo our, we redid our, our logo and our website, kind of everything all at once. We're a little stuck here because we gotta redo the website quickly because of the, um, the, the vendor is going out of business, so. But, um, there were some really nice vendors that we worked with, or consultants that we worked with out of TruSberry that, um, came up with a really nice, they, they worked with us to redo the logo.
A specific Auburn logo?
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 it would be like.
This is pretty generic. I think it's a considerable improvement from the little person reading a book, which we did in the sixties, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they, they do a really good job. You can take a look at the, the TruSberry website uses the logo that, that, um, we came up with with them and, and that's one that I actually like quite a bit, so.
After I just said that to you off, just unrelated to anything that we're talking about with the strategic plan stuff, I did go on and if you look at any surrounding library, I mean, Melbury's is a little kind of like older fashion looking, but it's clear that it was like designed, it's not just like a piece of clip art. The, you know, I, I think Worcester's is really beautiful, it's bright colors, it's really modern. I just think like from a, a marketing perspective, from a social media perspective, like we are just, this is, this is an unfortunate lack of, it's just a lack of personality. It doesn't, it doesn't really say much about the library, so.
I agree.
Be exciting to see it.
Yeah.
See it have its own personality.
The consultants that I work with, and I'm certainly not trying to like sell them or anything, but I think any logo consultant that you get would do something similar. They, they helped us create a logo. They helped us create like a logo and kind of a, a tagline incorporated. They helped us come up with like a color scheme that we could use in promotions and the website and all of that kind of stuff. So, and I don't remember it being particularly expensive.
It might worth finding out what that would cost.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll reach out, I'll see if I can get in contact with these folks again. And, yeah, get a quote or something.
I was afraid to say anything about that. Well, I'm not alone in it.
I, I've definitely heard from about three or four people, all completely unrelated, yeah, unrelated, all in the span of about two or three days. So I, it seems the consensus is folks would like a new logo. We can, we can retire this one, put it up in the rec. It's like a, like a basketball number.
Exactly. Banner of it. Well, because I think we talked so much about wanting to have more marketing and bringing more attention and through some of the focus groups. I was so shocked. People have no idea what's available at the library. Half the people don't even come and it's, so, um, I think it's, it's just, it would be such a missed opportunity not to, not to try to get it updated.
Yeah, it's a good time, you know, we're redoing the website, we're redoing the strategic plan and it's a good time.
This will be a good thing to have their friends involved in this one.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
They would have a lot of conversation with a lot of different people.
I agree. It, it might be a neat thing if you came up with logos and you had some sort of townwide. Yeah, the contest, or, or, or these are the choices, can we vote? Get the, the students at the schools to vote, get the, you know, different entities in town, just to so that you, you engage the whole community.
Sure, yeah, we can do something like that.
Yeah.
Three choices acceptable, which is.
Yeah, right. Great. Let's see, the friends, if you look on any of the websites where it's clear that they've engaged with a partner for this, you'll see that the friends have been, also had their logo branded to, to sort of call, you know, be, be, what's the word I'm looking for?
Very imaginative.
Complimentary, yeah, similar colors, but their own design, right? And so I think that would be an interesting thing.
I think their design is better than ours.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, the friends, the friend site is great, but just, you know, to then layer it in so that it feels like one kind of cohesive color palette. I don't know, it just, it would be really nice because I, I thought it was really appealing going on and searching the name of the library and then you see, oh, you have the friends, but it's clear it's different, but it's like the same colors, it was easy to connect the two. It was, I don't know, I thought it was great.
Yeah, visual consistency definitely does help when you're trying to promote something.
Yeah, I agree. So do you wanna choose one and we'll start with a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the appropriate library use policy as revised.
Do I have a second?
Eight, six, twenty-five.
Second, okay, thank you. And just gonna do a roll call. Matt is yes, Nan?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Erica, you are yes. Lindsay?
Yes.
And Mary, yes. Very good. What's the next one?
Community board policy, make a motion to accept that.
Okay, good. Matt is one.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Is the, what do you call it, the color, the, the type of, is that coming, staying or being removed?
Which.
Highlighting.
The section headers.
Oh, the, the highlighting, yeah, this was just to indicate where I had made changes. That will come off. I'm, I'm not gonna have highlighting in the final versions.
No, not highlighting, but I'm saying is the title, the phrase staying or not?
Uh, I believe so, yeah, I, I don't think.
The versions you circulated are, what, what we're reading is final. There's no, yeah, so items that, items acceptable for posting a space for it, it's items unacceptable. You just created sections.
Cause I think if headers were, headings were coming off, then we needed to differentiate between the two.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I thought it was important that they stay.
Yes, yeah, yeah, the highlighting was just to indicate where I'd added or changed the language, so, yeah, that, those are staying.
Then, okay, then I'm in favor of it as written. Okay, so I got Matt is one. Um, you're seconding that motion? Nan?
Sure.
Okay, I'm just gonna do a roll call. Matt?
Yes.
Nan?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And Mary, yes. Very good. What's the third?
Merriam room policy.
Okay, the Merriam room policy? Does anybody have any questions before we make a motion?
I would move to approve this policy.
Okay, that's Lindsay. And Matt is second. Just going to do a quick roll call on that. Matt?
Yes.
Uh, Nan?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And Mary, yes, unanimous.
This is okay?
Yeah, yep, yep.
I was a little distressed to see food not permitted. Usually, if you were to have a cooking demonstration or something, I don't know if that would be waived at that point, but to say.
There, there was, um, I thought there was something in there about.
I think the, previously the director could make a difference. I think they used to talk with the board of health person and there was a while where that was very, very strict with what could or could not come in for food. I think.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure that that was ever actually an official real thing, but, I mean, we could, it could always be food in common areas unless explicitly permitted by the director or, or food unless explicitly permitted by the director or except in the case of a class, you know what I mean? But I guess as general policy, if you wanna restrict food, it makes sense.
Yeah, and this, and this is just for outside, like this isn't for li, yeah, this is not for library.
Bringing food in is what you're saying, okay. But if we had a program designed around food or something.
Right, that, that would be different.
Excellent. Well, we got through the agenda. Does anybody have anything else before I remind?
Oh, we still have to vote on the.
There's one more problem.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did three. So we have four?
There's four, yeah.
So we have four? Oh my goodness, sorry guys, I'm getting tired.
It's three, it was three, three edited policies, one.
Thank you, thank you. So do I have a motion for the Library of Things?
I think just one point for clarification. So there's the policy and then there's the waiver. And Matt, you had asked if the waiver doesn't need to be reviewed by anybody else. I, I don't know, we're like approving the waiver itself. We're just approving the policy, just point for clarification.
You know what, actually, we can, we can approve the policy and then with this one, because there could be something, we'll think it would have to go through that, but we can still.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna approve this policy, but we'll stay silent on the waiver and recognizing that this requires the waiver and that that will be dealt separately. I just wanted to make out. At that, then I move to approve the Library of Things, one thing.
Do I have a second? Second, Erica, thank you. And just gonna want to do a roll call. Matt?
Yes.
Nan?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And Mary, yes. Do you have any other items, comments, questions before we review our next meeting? Which will be in the Merriam room and it will be September third, six P M.
So six or six?
Six thirty.
Oh, that's right. We did say six thirty, didn't we Vera? Okay.
I apologize.
No, 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 no. Thank you for reminding, uh, both of you reminding me because we, we did agree at the, at the last meeting. So my, my fault, so again, our next meeting will be September third at six thirty and we will meet here in the Merriam room, Merriam room, excuse me, and do you?
It'll be hybrid.
It will be hybrid, yes.
Just one thing, I have to check that we're doing fall soccer and I think practices are on Wednesdays and coaching, so I, can I email in case of.
Yes.
Conflict and we can sort that out, okay?
Absolutely.
Well, we can hold this date for now because it's on the record, but I, yeah, I just.
Yeah, and I think we've been, I think we've been flexible as a board whenever some, we need to switch a day. It's just, I think keeping the Wednesday, the first Wednesday, it's just easy for us to keep it on our radar, but I'm always flexible and I think everybody else is too, so, yeah.
I'll let you know when they have.
Can we just, to, to add to Lindsay's point, the reason I pushed the Wednesday time back is because I've been pulled back into the office on Wednesdays, whereas before I was work from home. So it takes me a really long time to get back. It would also be easier for me to push into like a Thursday or something like this. So I'm out in Quincy Tuesday, Wednesday, so just putting it out there that I welcome day flexibility.
I, I also wouldn't be opposed to proposing that we move to either Tuesday or Thursday because the Wednesday.
Thursday?
Thursday for, for Vera's date, but if we move to Thursday only because the finance committee, the time, like there's a lot of conflicting meetings that end up falling on Wednesdays and so I think, and just personally, my husband's also on some days, so childcare is difficult those times. So if we, if we could think about moving to the first Thursday.
We, if we agree now, we can move the next meeting to Thursday the fourth.
Well, I don't care about doing it once, but I think in general, Thursday's not good.
Because, yeah. On Thursdays.
That's our late day.
That's your Thursdays.
The, the only problem with doing it on Thursdays would be because it's the late day. That's often days that we do other kinds of programming.
Okay.
So I would have to double check and make sure that we've got, it's, that's not to say we can't move it, but I would just have to make sure that we're, we're open. We might have to do some shuffling with some of our programming.
So what if we just stick to the, the fourth just for next month and then we will discuss?
Okay.
Well, is that okay with everyone?
Just going out, Mondays are also an option. In fact, doesn't interfere with anything. Monday?
So question Vera, if we change a date, do we still go six thirty or do we, do we move back to six?
As long as it's not a Tuesday or a Wednesday, I can do six.
Okay. Any thoughts from the board? Unflex, whatever everybody else says.
Not speaking.
What time?
So.
I was, I was trying to just make a difference.
Vera was saying, only on, only on Wednesday at six thirty is just, that's the best you can do.
That's right.
Your coaching, so just for next meeting, let's just say the fourth at six P M. At six, is that right?
What's the fourth? What's the, okay, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I can't do before six thirty. Even six thirty is difficult. I leave early. I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I don't know what day the fourth is.
The fourth is a Thursday.
Is it a Thursday?
Yeah.
All right, let's do the Thursdays on six P M is perfect and I will arrive with the calendars. We can discuss more intelligently at the next meeting.
And I'll just, I'll just have to check and make sure this room is.
Is available, okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, yeah.
Great, enjoy second, Nan, thank you. And I will, good night, everybody.